Um, keep on reading.
Ask him, I guess. All right, Eric, are you going to lead this, or would you like I to do it?
Um, why don't you go ahead, Mike, if that's all right with you.
Okay, it's the meeting of the West Fargo Plan Zoning Commission on Wednesday, November 12th. First order of the agenda is a call to order, and we just did that. Number B is approval of the order of the agenda. Are there any changes, corrections, additions?
We've got a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the order of agenda. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Uh, number C is approval of minutes from September 9th. We did not have a meeting last month, so the minutes are from September 9th. Would entertain action on that. Got a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of the motion, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item D on the regular agenda is to review and recommendations of the West 94 area transportation plan with MetroCog.
All right, thank you, members of the commission. So I have Mike Bitner here with Fulton and Mink, and they are the ones who led this study, and it was headed off by MetroCog in cooperation with the city of West Fargo. We also worked with this on the study with North Dakota Department of Transportation as well. So, anyway, we kicked this off about a year ago, and it's been a very intense study, but we've learned a lot, and I'm excited to let Mike share what we've learned from the study. We'd like to present it to you and then bring it to the city commission at their next meeting. So, from that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thanks for your time, commissioners. I enjoyed the opportunity to headline here tonight. Normally, I'm an opening act, but hopefully, I can live up to the billing. So, there are a number of key themes I want to talk through with this study. You can see the study area on the screen in yellow. That's what we call the West 94 study area. And this area has really become appealing because of the Red River diversion for development. However, because of the Red River diversion, it's also become almost impossible to access. So what gives it life also makes it difficult to access. We also know that accessibility through Brooks Harbor isn't feasible due to the existing operational challenges and land use conflicts. And also, a major key theme, especially as this bubbled up through the end, was North Dakota Department of Transportation has rigorous requirements and firm preferences on interstate access. So the overall intent was to understand growth potential, to really guide the planning and engineering of this area into the future. We wanted to uncover potential barriers, as I mentioned, with the DOT and the overall public. We wanted to roadmap next steps, timelines, and funding strategies. And then finally, it's just important to recognize that this is not a final referendum or recommendations. In fact, because of the federal dollars we use, we can't make firm recommendations or even use the term "we recommend" to do this. But really, it is an analysis of potential solutions to really help guide the future growth and planning of this area. So why is early planning important? Obviously, you all sitting here understand this very well, but it's really important to look backwards as we start to think through the potential of how quickly this could unfold. This is south of I-94 in West Fargo, really saw the proliferation of growth through a 20-year period. And so we wanted to be really ready ourselves for this potential of growth while also understanding that we have a lot of barriers to potentially overcome. So, related to land use, we really wanted to develop good growth assumptions. Now, the intent of this study was not to finalize a land use and development plan. We know that the West Fargo is undergoing a growth plan currently to really do a lot of that work, but we wanted to develop assumptions that were good enough for us to start to understand the transportation implications. So, that was really the basis of these assumptions. And really, one of the key goals early on in the process was an emphasis on commercial growth, both to help with, help pay some of the tax base to develop this area, but also to really diversify the land uses. So we don't have a transportation system that is flowing out in the morning and back in the afternoon. All told, if we were to meet the densities that we'll show on the next screen, we'd see a potential for a 50% growth in population just from this area alone. So, a lot of potential should this be fully realized. So again, this is conceptual. The West Fargo Growth Plan will really refine this, but we want to highlight the connectivity between land use and transportation with this slide, so you can see some of those different types of land uses and densities and the hubs as we start to see roads interconnect. And this is really important because this starts to play into which road becomes an arterial designed to move traffic and which road becomes a collector or local road designed to access development in residential areas. So we take that land use information and we put it into what's called the Travel Demand Model. MetroCog that Dan works for maintains and operates this large computer model designed to connect origins and destinations from land use. So, where people start their trip and where they end, and it connects the dots. We're able to look out into the year 2050 using this tool. And so you can start to see in the graphic on the right side of the screen, a variety of different roadway uses from, you know, three-lane corridors all the way up to seven-lane corridors in some of our higher-trafficked areas as we start to interstate, as we start to intersect the interstate. As part of the plan, we developed a palette of different roadway cross-sections to provide developers a bit of flexibility as it starts to develop. Now, I want to talk through some of the key components of that overall plan, and I want to start with what we call the spine. It's not an avenue, it's not a street, it kind of cuts through the center of the overall mass like a spine. So we call it the spine throughout the corridor. And really, we want this to be kind of the signature feature of the transportation system. So, we wanted a vision that was foundational, versatile, and memorable. And so you can see a variety of different concepts that were inspired from examples across the country. But again, we wanted to provide a palette of solutions so that as a developer comes in and says, "I'm putting this through mixed use, I want to accomplish these goals," they can decide which of those cross-sections works best. Another key improvement location that was really probably necessary early in the process is a Christiansen Drive extension. So this would include a bridge extension across the Cheyenne diversion, and then we'd also improve that roadway to be able to have turn lanes so that drivers could pass, and we'd also add a trail on that section. So this is an important first connection because, as we'll talk about later, some of those larger improvements like interchanges, overpasses, are likely to take 10 years or more to build. And so, how do we start to facilitate development once the diversion's complete without forcing that to go through the Brooks Harbor neighborhood? If we start to look at where we have other access available, we have to go all the way to the west end of the study area. On 38th Street and I-29, that interchange exists, but it's also going to be a really key connection point both south and north. To the north, you can see the bottom left, there's still a lot of growth expected on the northwest portion of the metro area, which is expected to have upwards of 50,000 people at full build. And so while this is a great access point, it does create some challenges for the West 94 area because it's just so far to the west, it's in the opposite direction of a lot of those destinations. So the first new access point that we looked at was at 13th Avenue and also 15th Street. You can see on the left side of the screen, that's an overpass connection that just goes over the top of both the interstate and the diversion. On the right side of the screen is an interchange that accesses to the interstate, so you can get on and off the interstate. Previous plans only focused on overpasses. This would be the first study that looks at a full interstate access. So as we compare the benefits of the two, an overpass certainly lower upfront cost and long-term costs, it has fewer conflicts on Interstate 94, and it adheres to North Dakota Department of Transportation preferences. NDOT prefers two-mile access spacing, which is often somewhat confusing because if you look across the metro, it's pretty much one mile everywhere throughout the metro area. But as they found from a funding challenge standpoint, but also a safety issue across the metro, that their preference would be two miles. And that was extremely firm preference throughout the study process. Now, the benefits of an interchange is certainly we met with a lot of stakeholders in the development community, and their preference was, you know, you're not going to get the commercial that you desire with an overpass. Interchange is what's going to help with that. Also, it has better regional traffic travel times as we have better access to the area. And also, we had similar traffic volumes on Interstate 94 in all scenarios, just a matter of where you got on. We also looked at 15th Street as a connection point, and so again, on the left side of the screen, you can see an overpass. On the right side of the screen, you can see an interchange, a different style interchange. It's a little bit easier of a design to be able to make that connection north-south with this design here. You will see this massive road, 13th, coming all the way up north. That's just because NDOT requires a quarter-mile access spacing for any new interchanges. So as we compare 13th Avenue versus 15th Street, 13th Avenue certainly has better regional connectivity through direct connections to an arterial that connects all the way to, towards the Red River. 15th Street's just a little bit simpler of a design. The interchange itself maybe has some neutralized right-of-way impacts, but an overpass has some benefits from a right-of-way standpoint. We also looked at the Main Avenue and 26th Street location. This is a really complicated location, but one of the major benefits here is that we have an interchange already. And so, you know, the two-mile access spacing from DOT is, you know, is a little bit of a moot point because we already have access onto the interstate. So, if we're able to reconfigure that and provide access to the south, we would provide a nice access into the West 94 growth area, but also to the north, to that northwest sub-area. The big challenge here, though, is as we start to grow this area out, we put a lot of traffic on five legs, which is a really unique interchange design. So, five different approaches with more than 20,000 vehicles per day, which can be pretty hard to design and operate. There's also a lot of cost challenges. Not only do we go over the interstate, we're going to go over the diversion, the Cheyenne diversion on the south, but also, as you connect to the north, the Cheyenne diversion again crosses over, there's also railroad crossing. So, this improvement is, you know, as you connect all the way north to northwest, it comes out to be about $90 to $100 million worth of improvements.
So that one was discarded?
So, there was a number, yeah, that's misleading. There were, we had about a dozen alternatives that are kind of covered up by that text intentionally that we discarded. This concept actually works and still is able to facilitate all of that traffic. Yeah, 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 thanks for clarifying that. So which of the major I-94 features to build first? You know, even the 13th and 15th, I mentioned the cost for 26th and Main, 13th and 15th interchange is still looking at about $70 to $80 million. So none of these improvements are cheap by any means because of really the Cheyenne diversion location creates an extra layer of bridge that we have to build to make that connection, which is similar as you look at an overpass, too. But 13th and 15th, it's just a little bit better access for West 94 specifically. It's really centralized, it provides a little bit more of that natural east-to-west growth pattern that kind of connects to the rest of the city. 26th Street is better connectivity to northwest portion of the metro area, and actually, because of our utility capacity, we would need to connect our utilities from the northwest in and around that area anyways, and so we'd have to kind of bring them all the way down. So there's, you know, pros and cons to both, both being good options. We also looked at alternative modes of travel. So you can see on the graphic on the screen here, we looked at both trails, we looked at linearly across key corridors, and we also looked at intersections for a variety of solutions. And so, you can see in the center of the graphic, for example, kind of a Greenway id concept that's able to cut through the middle, have an intersection, maybe an overpass or, again, some conflict with DOT on whether they wanted to invest in something like that. But you can kind of see all the vision working together with the roadway system. This plan also connects to the Greenway Plan, Greenway Master Plan for the Red River diversion, which had some pretty ambitious ideas for aesthetics and trailheads and multimodal uses.
Hey, Mike, Dot, sorry, Dot's here. Are you able to share your screen on the Teams Network? If that's a big hassle, don't worry about it. I'm kind of reading along with the packet materials, but there we go, perfect, thank you.
We also had a very thorough public engagement approach. We had a developer roundtable to meet with developers to, you know, sanity check a lot of our land use assumptions and understand barriers. We met with jurisdictional oversight agencies, we met with property owners, we had one-on-one meetings with key stakeholders such as the Fairgrounds, we had a public open house, and then we had an interactive online website with preference surveys. In total, we had more than 100 stakeholders engaged throughout the process. We also tried to thoroughly market the study to try to get as much engagement as we could. We had postcards to property owners, we had open house marketed in the Brooks Harbor and West Side Elementary, email newsletter, social media posts by MetroCog and City of West Fargo, a press release. We also hammered in some marketing signs at key intersections that we knew that the neighborhoods would be driving past, hung posters hung in proximity businesses, and then quite a bit of news coverage as well. As we summarized the engagement, what we found was that there was notable support for the improvement strategies, anywhere from 55% to 65% support. We asked people to provide a kind of a criticality index, 100 is "this is really important to you," 0 is "this is not important to you." And most of, all of the solutions had a pretty high support number. Locally, there was a lot of preference towards an interchange at 13th and 15th over an overpass or a do-nothing. On the same token, there was some concerns from the Elmwood neighborhood about adding an access point and pushing traffic through 13th Avenue. There was also quite a bit of concern from NDOT about a new access onto Interstate 94. So we developed two phasing scenarios, and you can kind of see, by the, next to the name, we've got DOT preference, city preference. Within the graphics, you can see in green, that's a short-term, yellow, that's midterm, red, that's long-term. So, scenario A really emphasizes a new interchange point at 26th and Main as kind of your first signature feature for access, as well as an access point at Christiansen Drive. This concept also ends with just an overpass at 13th and 15th, depending on which location you look. Original plan didn't have a scenario that just had an overpass, but this was a really critical input from North Dakota Department of Transportation at one of these scenarios. Scenario B, from technical staff locally at the city, a lot of preference towards the interchange at the two locations, 13th and 15th, as well as 26th and Main. And then you can kind of see how it sequences out for this example, starting at 13th and 15th and Christiansen Drive. So, as you compare the alternatives, scenario A advantage, better implementation and costs, lower costs overall without the interchange, better, quicker access to the northwest, and then better Main Line I-94 safety. Scenario B, just that interchange at 13th and 15th certainly had feedback about the economic development potential, better to achieve that commercial development, quicker access across for all modes of travel. It was the stakeholder-preferred alternative and also had some regional traffic flow efficiency benefits. So, last slide here, the keys to future success. You can kind of see, we've left this with a number of feasible alternatives. We discarded a lot of bad ideas through the process and ended with a couple scenarios. So as we start to look at the cost, though, it's really significant. This area provides a lot of opportunity for the city of West Fargo, but a tremendous amount of financial barriers to be able to overcome to unlock its full potential. As you can see, we're upwards of $400 million all sudden and done with all these improvements. And so, keys to success, continued coordination and collaboration between the city and the North Dakota Department of Transportation. Because DOT is unsure about what projects should move forward, if at all, local leadership from the city to continue to move this forward if you want to advance any of these, preserving the right-of-way so we don't build something in the middle of, you know, the spine roadway we can't move around it. Looking for grant dollars to help support these high-dollar cost improvements, continued stakeholder engagement, commitment to the growth plans. For example, if you put a low-density development right in the middle of this area, it's going to make it very difficult to ever justify new access, interchange access, and then get started early. There's two examples of new interstate access points that are happening across the state, one in Grand Forks, one in Fargo, and those are going to be completed in about 10 to 15 years from their inception. So, this isn't something that's going to be able to pop up overnight by any means. So, with that, I'm happy to open it up for any questions or comments.
About how many acres is this?
Good question. I can absolutely get that answer to you. I don't know it off the, I don't have it memorized off the top of my head. Do you remember?
Well, acre-wise, I'm not sure, but it's about two to two-and-a-half square miles.
Is that much? So that's 640 acres per square mile. So it's 13, 1600 acres. You maybe shared this, but when you talk about short-term and long-term, is there an estimated number of years that you would forget those two following up?
A lot of that's going to be contingent upon how you get your dollars to work out. So, pretty intentional that these are not tied to specific years, but as you start to think about when this growth could occur, you know, we kind of looked at, could this, this could happen as quickly as 2050, or maybe 2060 is more of a conservative estimate. But I think there's a bit of a chicken and the egg element that goes into this, right? If you can't access it, you're probably not going to achieve the type of development you need, and, you know, how do you, how do you generate the need for the access point without interest in it? So there's, the cost is going to really be the key to success in moving this at a pace that you want.
Any other questions?
Well, we've seen what happens when North Dakota DOT doesn't go along with things like the Main Avenue corridor, right? I mean, if the DOT doesn't buy into this, I mean, what's the chances of getting funded for it? I mean, I mean, it's got to be something they approve, or it doesn't get done. Is that, is that a fair assumption?
Yes, and that is why this scenario A ended in that the plan is kind of a compromise. So there's, there's way, essentially, their stance was, "We're not ready to commit to any final recommendations," right? And so we want the flexibility. From a local perspective, it is pretty advantageous if you are interested in interchange access point to get a plan approved that has that inside of it. So, that was kind of the, one of the success points that came through this. And so, yeah, there's going to be, again, their biggest challenge is going to be funding. Typically, interchange projects are 80% federally funded, you know, with a lot of times 10% state funds as well. And so there's going to be a struggle to make this all work from a financial perspective because their budget's pretty stretched. So, there was no, "We absolutely can't do this, but we need further justification of why it won't work this way and it'll work that way." So there's just a lot more work that needs to be done to be able to advance some of the bigger ideas.
Any other questions? I'll just make a comment. It'd be nice to kind of be proactive instead of reactive. We tend to let things get built up and then we try to hope for a answer. But I'll agree with Dave, I think DOT is driving the bus, and we kind of got to go along for the ride. But I certainly would encourage them to help the city manage this growth and, you know, tied into our, our growth study now, which will also provide some good insight as to what their thoughts are as well. So, I don't know, is there any action that needs to be taken on this or just receiving this? Mr. Nielsen?
So, we will be asking for a recommendation to forward on to the city commission for adoption of the plan. So this will be on the city commission agenda for Monday, the 17th.
Okay.
But I, I mean, I drove this on the way here, on the right-hand exchange to get here, and adding another interchange on that road, I mean, as our traffic grows and grows and grows, that road's going to be scary. And so I, I mean, I, I would say the DOT preference one scenario A is the one we should recommend. Just, just for safety sake, and I get why they don't want these interchanges, bang, 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 like that. It seems to me, you know, for 1,200 acres, I think they can get by. And I don't think it's just getting by, they have access to that, you know, scenario A, and I think it's a good access, you know, and as long as the infrastructure fits that access, I think we'd be fine. So I, I guess I would really recommend scenario A.
Maybe just a point clarification. We're not looking for any recommendations on any specific scenarios, it's just a recommendation for adoption of the study itself. So the study outlines both options for future consideration, essentially.
All right. Man my motion. Wait, it just makes perfect sense.
However, your preference would be A.
Exactly. Put that in there, that'd be great.
Hey, Aaron, I gotta, sorry, I might be out of line in terms of our sequence of order here, but maybe just a question. I think somebody asked how many acres are being served by this transportation infrastructure. Makes me wonder, the question of kind of bang for the buck, we're spending a lot of money here, depending on federal funds, of course, to provide access to a relatively small area. Has there been any broader perspective of, is this the right place to spend those dollars? Or is there a better part of town where spending dollars would get more bang for the buck?
Yes, there has. So, there was a very high-level assessment of that as part of this study here in terms of what the likely costs would be associated with the infrastructure required for the transportation network. The intention is, is that this study will kind of, you know, dovetail right into the Growth Area Master Plan, and the Growth Area Master Plan is where we're going to be taking kind of a deeper dive into the fiscal implications. That's one of the kind of core principles that we're, core lenses that we're looking through as part of that study is just making sure that whatever growth options we ultimately end up recommending are fiscally sustainable in the long term. And so, questions like, yeah, if we invest millions upon millions of dollars for this area here and all we, you know, we get low-density residential development, that might not pay, you know, justify the amount of public expense required to allow that development. And so, that's why it was mentioned at the start of the presentation, you know, there was an emphasis on how do we create opportunities for commercial development to increase the tax base, to help, you know, balance the ledger, if you will. The other aspect I wanted to mention too quickly is related to the questions on timing and future years. I think mostly you were a part of that conversation with a Growth Area Master Plan consultant a couple of weeks back, and obviously, we're looking at this area as well as the north side of town as, you know, two potential future growth areas. And so, there are significant barriers for growth in terms of our sanitary sewer capacity and our sanitary sewer system. And so, it might be, you know, looking at the north side of town, allowing that to develop a little further until we get to this area on the south side. And so the timing is very much up in the air. But back to your original question, Commissioner Dodds, the Growth Area Master Plan is where we're going to be diving deeper into that question on kind of the math of the financial equation.
Aaron, just a quick question for clarity. You know, it says DOT preference and then city preference. Does it mean that the city preference would not get DOT support or federal support, or is it more of philosophical, developing east to west and things like that that would make it city preference?
Well, I can maybe start to answer that question.
Or the cost.
Add it up to others, but I think it's more of just acknowledgement that the DOT and representatives from the city as part of this study were, you know, on slightly different pages in terms of what the, you know, what the kind of preferences were. Obviously, for, on the city side of the, the conversation, you know, we do have a need or a desire to attract commercial development and kind of balance out some of our existing land uses. We're very, you know, neighborhood and resident-heavy right now, somewhat of a bedroom community to the larger metro. And so, you know, that's a identified goal within our comprehensive plan, and so that, some of those goals are reflected in these, you know, more detailed, focused studies. some of those goals are reflected in these, you know, more detailed focus studies. Whereas the DOT, they're looking at things like safety and flow of traffic. And so they've got a different set of priorities that they're, you know, looking for in these conversations. So, if you want to add anything?
I'll just note that, just because it's a preference, I don't think that there's any definitive that you couldn't do one or the other at this point. It's just, we wanted to, really the goal of what DOT got engaged is they wanted to have options open to be able to, you know, prove that the density is going to be what it is to justify an interchange. So there's just some of those variables that need to kind of bear out as you start to move forward, as opposed to saying it must be these couple different things. The goal was just, let's keep some flexibility as we move into the future. Certainly, their preference is, you know, to Aaron's point, is that they're the guardians of the interstate, right? So they are going to look at this from a cars and safety perspective, and certainly, locally, there's a lot of interest in development, right? And so DOT's not always looking at how the development works. And so there's just, and that's why it's just preference, it doesn't mean you can't do one or the other, or even like mix things up a little bit in terms of timing and sequence and how things work and make a decision 20 years from now, right? So there's a lot of opportunities, but trying to build some roadmap if you wanted to follow one or the other is kind of the intent of these graphics.
All right. We have a motion to approve moving this on to the city commission for their consideration. Is that correct? Do we have a second? We have a second? Any further discussion? You're in on, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item number E is non-agenda items. Do you have any non-agenda staff?
Maybe just a quick note, wanted to let the Planning and Zoning Commission know that as, we may have some lighter agendas moving forward, as, you know, the city is fairly well-built out within its current, you know, footprint, as you all know. While we work on these studies for the future, we're also, as we have time, we're also going to be looking at some other projects such as some updates to our zoning regulations. And so specifically, we're going to be looking at the downtown mixed-use DMU zoning district as we find time. There's just a number of potential gaps and things that we want to make sure we're addressing and filling. And so just wanted to provide you all that quick note, and then if there's any other aspects of the Title IV zoning or subdivision regulations that you would like staff to look into, or things that we should be aware of or taking a closer look at, please reach out to us. Any questions on that? If not, that's all I've got. Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
Move to adjourn.
We've got a moment to adjourn, second, anyway?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.